Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start. Is that okay? Our committee of the whole meeting Wednesday, September 25th. You can tell this is committee of the whole because let's use first names up here if everyone can agree to that. And also you can tell most of us have on casual clothing. So it's different. It's different. Okay. Okay. Some of us do. Okay, so we're gonna just start. I didn't, I got this memo, but I'm still getting my computer up and running. So I'm starting with ordinance. Do you have it on yours? Can I read it? I'm getting it. I'm getting it. Okay. I'm gonna start with the 30-minute. 2024-06. An ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the wastewater and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2025. And we will start with a presentation from our director of the utilities department, Director Zeiger.
Thank you and welcome.
Catherine Zeiger, Utilities Director. There really have not been any changes. I know there indicated there would be a memo with changes since our last meeting, but there have not been any changes to the budget since we last met. Yeah.
Great, thank you. I'd also like to say I called you and listened to your voicemail to know how to pronounce your last name, and I still messed it up. So I apologize for that. Questions from council members? No questions. Okay, okay, wow, okay. Oh, oh, Councilmember, sorry, Isabel, and then we'll go with Dave on Zoom.
Thanks. I just wondered if, am I up?
Go ahead, go ahead. Yes, perfect.
I just wondered if we are anticipating any rate changes in the near future? That is, within the next year or two?
We are currently working on our water rate case as we presented as one of our goals for the budget. So yes.
So that will be coming up at some point in the near future?
If it continues as scheduled, we anticipate having the water rate case starting January 1st, 2026.
And will that, how long will that suffice? Before another rate change is necessary?
We are trying to keep our rate cases and rate changes on a regular four-year schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel.
Yes, for the benefit of the public, could you please review what the budget is? And I know, I understand the wastewater and the stormwater are together, is that right? And then the water is separate? Can you, can you just review in broad terms the figures for the benefit of the public?
Sure, yeah.
Or those of us who, you know, have slept since the budget week. Thank you.
Absolutely. So our 2025 budget for the water fund will be $22,656,000. Sewer and storm in the appropriation ordinance are combined. And so that is the total of the $33,820,000. And just to clarify, the sewer portion of that is $29,220,000, and the storm portion of that is $4,600,000. For a grand total of $56,476,000. Any, could be more specific if you'd like?
And that's all ratepayer-funded, is that true?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Dave, is your hand still, is your hand up again, or is it just from the last time? Okay, last time. It looks like, yep, okay. I guess now we'll go to the public, members of the public, to see if there are any comments.
Yes, and if you are a member of the board and you were on Zoom, you wish to make a comment. You can say that it's going to be raising and future and reacting staff or in the work hours, any assistance, or send a chat to the people.
Okay, it looks like no one's making a move here in chambers. Nobody online?
No media takers.
Okay. We'll go ahead back to council. Any comments? Follow-up questions after public comment? Nope. Okay. Great, thank you. So that's, we just keep rolling, right? Yep, yep, okay. Thank you so much, Director Zeiger, for coming tonight. Okay, up next we have appro-
Sorry, Kate, the, I think we need to do a
I don't think we need to do anything until the end of the meeting.
I thought it was for each item of legislation.
Okay, make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation.
The parliamentarian will make a motion to forward a recommendation to the council that the appropriation ordinance be adopted.
Can I just say, for everybody's information, I was at my kids' cross-country meet right before this. So I have literally been, like, running. And that is why I feel a little disorganized tonight.
But not as fast as him, right?
Not, no, he came in, he came in fourth overall. I'm gonna brag on the child, fourth overall in the county. That's my baby. So, where's my motion?
Right here.
Thank you. So I would like to move to forward a recommendation to the council that the appropriation ordinance be adopted.
Okay, moved and seconded. I think I just, do I call the roll? I think I do it? Or do you? Okay.
It's probably easier that way?
Sure.
If that's okay with y'all? All right. Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Noah, my apologies, I put you in the normal order.
Yeah.
I'll fix it next time. Stasberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and so we recommend that be adopted. Nine, zero, zero. Okay, up next we have appropriation ordinance 2024-07, appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for 2025. We have the Bloomington Transit General Manager, GM Connell. Thank you so much for coming tonight, and take it away.
Good evening. John Connell, General Manager of Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation. Respectfully request an adoption of this appropriation ordinance for the Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation for the 2025 budget. There were no changes made to the 2025 budget since the August meeting. The total for the 2025 budget is $32,632,634 with a proposed tax levy of .0403.
Okay. Questions from council members? Matt, go ahead.
Thank you, Director Connell. One question that I either don't recall seeing a lot of information on in the, in the presentation, or, and I didn't remember to ask about when you were here previously, is just what, what Bloomington Transit's overall planning and, I guess, I don't know, capital plan, for lack of a better term, is for thinking about covering bus stops? So I know it's been a goal, and I know there's been some work with ESD over time to advance some of those. And can you just speak a little bit more about that? Like, are we approaching that holistically or in a systematic way?
Yeah, so we currently have a, a three-year plan for bus stop improvements in excess of $200,000 for each year for three years. 2024 is the first year. We have received bids for new shelters and other amenities, signage, wayside signage. So over a three-year period, we hope to invest over $600,000 to improve accessibility at bus stops.
And that's maybe, like, five to 10 a year, or what's, or a little more than that? 10 to 20? Like, I've heard various figures of-
It's gonna, it's gonna vary based on the degree of the improvements at each shelter. Some may be a simple replacement of an older, if you, if you, they're like 1980-style boxy shelters. It's part of our rebranding effort, but more importantly, it's to provide greater convenience and comfort for the passengers. So at the busier bus stops, you're gonna see a significant investment in, in the amenities as opposed to a rarely-used stop may just include signage and a bench.
Got it. And maybe just one last question here, if that's okay, to follow on the same thread? Which is, I appreciate those investments. I just know it's a pretty sizable problem also. Do, are we, are y'all thinking at all about, okay, we have this many total stops? Like assessing, like, what the types of interventions in a perfect world we would like to see? And thinking about, like, what is that? Is it 3 million, 5 million, 10 million? You know, so that we could think about in a broader sense, capital planning over, say, a decadal time scale to actually have a kind of goals-based versus, like, this is what we could get into the budget, so it's what we're gonna do, you know, type of approach?
Well, we have, for the, for example, for the proposed green line, the bus rapid transit line, there is a significant amount within the study that lists out costs for, you know, the degree of amenities that we settle on. So that, that's, that's a completely different project than just what we're, we're investing in. We came up with a dollar figure, like I said, I think it's $245,000 a year for three years. So what our manager, special projects manager and planner, what she's doing is she's looking at the on-off counts by stop to prioritize. So that's been the approach so far.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Isabel? And then, and then Dave?
I just wanted to make sure I understood your previous answers. So you said it was $245,000 each year for three years for installing bus shelters?
Three years. We have a three-year plan.
For three years, right.
So 2024, we had $245,000 budgeted. I believe in this budget, we have somewhere real close to that same figure. And then our plan is to do the same in 2026.
And then you mentioned $600,000 for accessibility of shelters?
Well, over the three-year period, it'll be, will be, the investment, total investment will be over $600,000.
Okay, so that's included, okay. My question was actually on your Budget Form 2, Estimate of Miscellaneous Revenue. I was trying to locate where the city's ED-LIT funding would be in this list of revenues, the 3.8 million. Do you know?
Let me see. Which form are you on?
Budget Form 2, Estimate of Miscellaneous Revenue. Yeah, it's on the screen now.
I believe it's in the miscellaneous revenues. I'm looking at the proposed tax. I don't, I don't have that. Let me look here. Should've brought the binder.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what, what category it would, it would go in. And there's none that is a high enough dollar, well, no, there are a few that are high enough dollar figure. So I couldn't really, maybe it was in other receipts or something.
I, I can get that information to you.
Yeah, if you could just get back to me, I'd like to
Okay.
see where that's located. Because that's, that's been an important part of your, of your budget and your growth.
Correct.
Right?
It's been transformative, quite frankly.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave?
Thank you, Director Connell. My question is regarding a project that's still a ways off, seems. But hopefully will happen soon, and that is the new correctional facility that the county is considering, and the associated facilities with that. It seems that there are a couple of locations, unfortunately, they're not central locations. There's, it looks like the North Park site is, may still be in play, I don't know. And the Vernal Pike site might be an option. It doesn't look like Thompson is gonna be working. So these are gonna require, I think, bus service for those who do not have transportation. Has your board, have you and your board been thinking about this? Providing service to the new facility on the periphery of the city?
Yes, we've, we've had conversations with representatives from Monroe County. We currently, we submitted a proposal that included three different fixed route proposals. One actually serves the 46 corridor into Ellisville. We, the county officials have come back and they've selected one of those fixed routes. And we're waiting to hear back if they're willing to fund it.
And how regular are those, are those routes? If I were, if I were needing to take, say, from downtown Bloomington, if I were needing to get to the new facility?
Hourly, hourly, hourly headways.
Hourly, okay. Okay, thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, we will now go to public comment for appropriation ordinance 2024-07. I did just want to say that the public comment portion of the deliberation of this item will constitute the statutorily required public hearing on the transit budget for 2025. Anyone in chambers want to make a comment? We might have one here.
We do have someone on Zoom with a hand raised, David.
Okay, let's go ahead with our Zoom commenter.
Hello, I was just asking, I want to ask a question about line item 9514. What is the digital equity fund?
Okay, and we can, we can potentially answer that after the end of public comment? Is that, is that all you have for your?
Yeah, yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Point of clarification, that's actually the civil city budget.
So it's the next one, okay.
Yeah, we can get to it.
That will be on the next one that we will, we can take up when we get to the next ordinance. If you can hang tight on Zoom. Okay. In chambers?
Okay, hello, my name is Joe Davis. Thank you for listening to my comments. I think that there should be a slight reduction in the amount of money appropriated to the, for this transportation budget. Counselor Rollo brings up a good point. It's proposed to build the Justice Campus out in Criderville in between here and north, I mean, it's called North Park, in between here and Ellisville. The best location for this gleaming justice beacon is to place it where the proposed expansion of the Monroe County Convention Center is currently slated for. Any convention, any expansion should be to the opposite side to the west on Monroe County land. Monroe County owns that entire area where the proposed expansion of the convention center is. If we kept, if we moved the Justice Campus there, we could save a tremendous amount of wear and tear and stress and carbon by keeping the Justice Campus central as it is currently, co-locating the courts, the jail, probation, the other local services that are providing resources to counter recidivism. We can make this a beautiful, gleaming beacon of justice that will attract people from outside who wanna see a monument just like in Washington DC where they take their kids, their grandkids. They wanna show off these beautiful, beautiful buildings. And we can do everything right there in that location that eliminates a lot of transportation stress that's going to be added to BT and also to, to rural transit and the, and the interactions that happen between them. So this should be reevaluated, and the money should be reallocated to bringing the Justice Campus to Third Street between South Walnut and South College. This is what the people want. We need you to represent the people. We are counting on you. We are counting on you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Any other commenters on Zoom?
No other takers on Zoom at the moment.
Okay. Looks like no one else in chambers. We will go back to council members for any follow-up questions or comments on the BT budget. Looks like none, so we-
Dave's actually online.
Oh, Dave, I'm so sorry. Okay, go ahead.
That's okay. It happens to everyone. I think Joe Davis makes a really excellent point. And I'm concerned about the location. I think, I think we generally share that concern. I know that several years ago, the council voted down a proposal to put the jail in, you know, south of the city near Fullerton Pike because it was too far away. And now it seems that the options are being looked at to, that are just, you know, too, too far for, for most folks without, of course, bus service. But then that's, that's an expense of its own, and it's just, it seems like this could be avoided. So I'm glad that BT is, Bloomington Transit is, is looking at it in all respects. But I think that we, we need to think about collaborating with our county friends and colleagues and seeing if we can place this facility somewhere central. Sorry to digress on that topic, but, and I do appreciate all the good work that Bloomington Transit does. They're an extraordinary organization. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that comment, Dave. Also, I agree with you. Others do too here in chambers, so just letting you know. Okay, any motions? I think we are. I think we're ready, yeah.
Then I would like to move to, to forward a recommendation to the council that appropriation ordinance 2024-07 be adopted.
Okay, thank you so much. Clerk Bolden, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Piedmont Smith? Well, now, you know what, I did it again. Let's try this again. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. Stasberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Ruff?
Yes.
Okay, that, that tally is nine, zero, recommendation for adoption. Moving right along, we have appropriation ordinance 2024-05, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing the 2025 civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. And we have City Controller McClellan here to kick us off. Welcome.
Good evening, council. Jessica McClellan, City Controller. We present to you tonight our final budget after budget hearings with some amendments made of the home-ruled funds. The total is $115,128,135 of the DLGF, pardon, of the DLGF-reviewed funds. Of the home-ruled funds, it's $36,545,054 for a total budget of $151,673,189. We went through a week of budget hearings with you, and we have corrections and amendments to this budget that we have presented to you in the memo, included in the packet. A summary of those changes are as follows. A million dollars added in transportation plan projects to be determined by, by planning and by processes that they have in the works. That is $600,000 and $300,000 between two funds in the budget and $100,000 in the bond. We increased the council president stipend from $1,000 to $1,500. We decreased the HR website costs. We cut $15,000 because the website costs are included in total elsewhere in the budget. We cut a planning UDO study that was budgeted at the time of budget hearings. Our estimate was $250,000. And then during the week of budget hearings, we heard back from the consultant that it would be around $150,000, or $100,000. So we cut $150,000 from planning because we got a cost for that study. There was an error in the mayor's, the mayor's salary lines. We were missing the salary for the community, community engagement personnel that added $99,579 to the budget. There was an error in the calculation to the police salaries. We corrected that. That added $1,052,722 to the budget. We made increases to the clerks, to some positions in the clerk's office. The chief deputy, deputy, those positions were increased for a total of $11,500. And that, that really sums up the changes in the budget. We also outlined some high priority items in our budget memo related to transportation and planning and, and safety, transportation safety in your memo. Some of those things were already included in the budget. We highlighted those. And so we present to you our, our budget tonight that we feel best represents sort of what we got from our discussions during budget hearings. And we look forward to answering any questions that you have.
Thank you so much. Councilmember questions? Let's start with Rallo on Zoom. Oh, sorry, Dave, I'm very sorry.
Oh, it's, it's quite all right.
Okay.
I apologize. I go by a lot of names. Thank you, Controller McClellan. I, generally, I like the additions. My question involves the transportation, increases in transportation fund. Will that, would, would those come to us in terms of special appropriations later on in, in the next, in this year? In other words, will projects be presented and then will we be able to vet them? Or is this going to be something that is just funded internally and to be determined by the, by planning and transportation solely?
Planning, I'm gonna get out of my lane a little bit because the, the planning and engineering process is still a little bit new to me. But I do believe that they would, they still have to bring the study to the council and present the study and the priorities in the study. I don't know exactly what the timeline is for that. But like I said, I do know that these projects have not been, what these projects are is not determined. We've made the funding available. I understand what you, I think I understand what you're trying to get at with your question. And I would have to say I don't exactly know the answer without engineering's assistance.
Generally speaking, do we have oversight role? So if, if that could be provided, that information, that would be welcome. Thank you.
We'll provide, definitely.
Thanks.
Other questions? Matt?
Thank you. I had a few follow-ups from questions I'd had, written questions I'd had following the budget hearings. These ones are specific to the, the controller's presentation and Q and A. One was guidance that you had shared from the government finance, something, about two months surplus in, in funds being a good general rule. I asked if the State Board of Accounts had guidance, specific to Indiana or their views, and you indicated you reached out. Have you heard back and what was their answer?
Yes, I have heard back. Their response was that they do- Their response was that they do not give that kind of guidance. Their response was along the lines of, we are a, we are an auditing agency and we don't give that kind of guidance, that that's a local decision.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, can I keep going on a couple here? Thank you. I don't have to, of course, you can switch, but.
Uh, sort of for committee as a whole, they say we have about five minutes each, so just feel free.
At a time, I guess, yeah.
Right.
There's no limit. Uh, I can talk all night. Um, okay, another one here. I, I asked about, um, the fact that some funds, I gave the Parking Meter Fund as an example, but there were several others, uh, have surpluses akin to like a hundred percent of the fund balance or something, or, you know, the annual fund, um, the annual revenues going into the fund, for instance. Uh, so much bigger than that two-month, uh, cash-on-hand balance. And, and your response for the rationale for that was that from what you'd been told, prior rationale was cash on hand for repairs and/or bonding. I guess that didn't feel like, could you ex- expand on that? Uh, it, do you agree with that rationale? Does it, like, does it make sense? I was just, it was curious to me that there were a handful of funds that we were seemingly selectively not kind of moving in the direction of the two-month surplus, you know, guidance that was shared.
And in my head, I'm thinking about the Parking Meter Fund, um, the PS Lit Fund and the ED Lit Fund. Um, Parking Meter Fund, I, um, I, I was def, I did ask about that and I think that they were thinking about replacing, like, some really big-ticket items that might even require bonding, but maybe would just require a lot of cash, like replacing, um, replacing meters or, uh, doing some kind of infrastructure project that is allowed in the Parking Meter Fund or bonding, you know, for an infrastructure project. That makes sense to me. Um, ED Lit has, has a pretty good balance. Um, I think that might have been related to, you know, bonds that are being paid out of that fund. And then PS Lit, um, that's public safety. And I do think that it's possible that they're, they were may possibly considering, when you develop a cash balance and then you go out to bond, it really increases your credit rating and gives you a better interest rate if you also show that you have a cash balance in that fund to sort of, it's gonna make your credit rating a lot stronger to the bondholders. So it does make sense, you know, on that level to me.
Got it. So sometimes maybe bonds, but also maybe non-bonded capital outlays or other outlays that might exceed, like, the bulk of one year's revenues. So sort of some multi-year saving.
Exactly.
Okay.
Flexibility.
Thank you. One last one here on the Controller Budget was I, I had asked about, um, and I've been asked about this for some years now. Uh, we, we've taken a, a fund-based approach to budgeting. It doesn't allow a lot of visibility necessarily into all the revenue streams and where they go. And so I'd asked about, um, the creation of a table that could actually visually demonstrate, uh, for every single fund, for, well, for every revenue source, which fund or funds it goes into. And then, yeah, similarly for every fund, what revenues come in. I know we do inter-fund transfers, which complicates the picture a bit. And then on top of that, there are, uh, often federal, state, or local limitations on the uses of the funds, which is another relevant factor, I think, to get a holistic picture and understanding of both revenues and funds, uh, from the council seat in order to be able to exercise our, you know, fiscal responsibility and oversight. And it's been, it's been hard to, to get that full picture. And, um, similarly, you said it was something you were interested in working on, but it wouldn't be ready, uh, in the, in the timeframe of those questions. Could you speak more to, um, you know, your thoughts on, on that front? If it's something that you're able to produce or other barriers to that?
I'm very, um, committed to producing that. I like the idea. I think it's a, would be an excellent document for all of us to have, um, all of us in the city, you know, to have. I have an intern, uh, who started last week and this is, I, this is one of the projects I'm having him work on. What we do have in the office is we have two giant, you know, the giant four-inch binders full of, with like a piece of paper for every fund and sort of that information on a piece of paper. So we're giving him those binders and asking him to make a table.
Okay.
So he's happily agreed, so.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing more about it.
But I, it's a great suggestion. Thank you.
One of the other questions I had, because you highlighted the budget changes and one of the things that, uh, I raised in the budget hearings was that kind of duplicative position of adding to the office of the mayor that homelessness community coordinator position, but then discovering that there was that positioning community and family resources that was, uh, currently vacant, uh, the special projects coordinator that was also supposed to be working on unhoused stuff. So have both of those positions been retained? And how are, how, what is the plan to avoid duplication with those positions?
That's a great question, especially avoid duplication of, you know, of duties and services. Um, not that we couldn't use, honestly, maybe more than one person working on homelessness. But to answer your question simply, yes, they are both still in the budget. And, um, I do know that the CFRD position is still vacant. I also may be stepping out of my lane and saying that I don't think that they plan on filling that position because they have so many other things to do in that department right now. Um, and that it may even, I know that organizational, organizationally, there needs to be, that position needs to be looked at in the ecosystem of CFRD as a whole. Again, stepping out of my lane is not my department, um, and I am not HR. Um, but I do know that the mayor's office has a very good plan for their, how they intend to use that position in coordination with, like, major projects that the mayor does. If the mayor would like to come on up, then, okay.
I've been seeing her back there look like she wants to jump out of the seat.
Hi, Gretchen App, Deputy Mayor. Uh, so we would like to keep both positions. CFRD had requested several additional positions this year. Uh, as I mentioned before, we were unaware that that position was in the budget until we made the org chart. So they would not keep it for homelessness, though. They would repurpose it for, um, one of the other roles that we were not able to fill this year because we had limited, uh, the controller had told us we could afford five new positions only this year, given, um, uh, the expense of the salary changes that we were making. So if possible, we would love to keep that position to help CFRD meet some other needs.
But you're not sure exactly how that position would be used right now in the department?
Not at this moment. I, I think we would need to look at the list of positions that Shetoy had requested, uh, Director Moss had requested and go through and decide which of those would be the most important.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? You can keep going. Just keep going.
I have one more question, which is definitely probably more a Controller question. Um, so in the, this is like me trying to understand how this is formatted. So in the go bond, um, uh, work session, information session that I think was just yesterday, it feels like a long time ago, um, you, you gave us this paper that had our tax rate on it, um, that was point eight-six, but then in here it looks like the tax rate is one point oh four, one four. Um, that's on page eight of our packet. And I'm kind of assuming that there's something that's included in the packet that is, that was not included in here for some reason that makes sense to somebody who's not me. So I was wondering if you could speak to that. I hope that makes sense.
It does make sense and my answer is not going, you're, I, I don't like this answer, but this is where we talk about, we have to advertise high. The tax rate, this, I know this isn't gonna make any sense. I'm looking at it right now. That tax rate that's listed on the Form Four and, um, you've, you've got a total there, one point oh four, one four. That is not going to be our tax rate. We have to advertise a higher tax rate. It's what the DLGF recommends that we do and we, we did it last year. We've always done it this way every year. It's, it's not a new thing. It's not a me thing. Um, this is, this is caused by, the budget is correct. The budget is the amount. You are approving this number for the budget. And I tell DLGF what our net assessed value is going to be. Follow me. That, and I, they, they want me to put that number in low. I do that and then it makes the tax rate come out high. And that's called advertise high. And the reason the DL, now, doesn't make, there's a, there's a reason behind it. It's so that if there are, um, if, it's because of the four decimal points of your tax rate. They don't want you to lose out on any money. Now I'm gonna get myself lost. It has to do, it has to do with the four decimal points of your tax rate in your budget and they want to be able to give you your entire budget and give you the ta, the full tax rate to get you that budget. If you advertise your exact tax rate that you expect to get and you don't advertise high, there's no wiggle room for the DLGF to make minor corrections in your tax rate to give you your full levy. That's, that's the answer.
Okay, so if I'm understanding this, you are estimating the valuation low so that then they have to estimate the actual tax high. But then ultimately, the valuation is gonna come back higher and so then the tax rate can drop. So I guess then the follow-up question, if I'm understanding that correctly, is, does that mean that this theoretical 2025 tax percentage number is like also an estimate?
That's correct.
Like, like, but what if our, what if our actual assessed value doesn't get high enough to make the percentage go down enough?
Um, the variable there is that we know the, we do know the assessed value. The assessed value is what's on that sheet, five billion, five hundred something million.
Wait, so we know the exact number for the assessed value, but they still want us to estimate it?
Um, that we, we know the exact value and they want us to put it in low. So I put the assessed value in as four billion, six hundred million on every fund. And last year it was put in at.
Even though we know that the assessed value is higher than that, they don't, they, mm.
Yes. And last year, the assessed value was put in at three billion, four hundred million, which was like a million lower than what it should have been. This is the way it's done every year and so.
I think that's weird. I'll just come out and say that I think that that's a little.
My only suggestion is I will, I'm happy to explain it every year. You, you can ask. It doesn't make sense.
Hopefully I'll remember now and, and understand, but I will still think that it's a little bit strange, but thank you very much for that explanation.
Thank you. Uh, Joycey, Isabelle, did you have a question?
Okay.
Well, now I have more questions after that. Maybe we should have DLGF come down and explain it. It's their rule. But anyway, um, so it looks like, uh, for the general fund, by the end of 2025, we're expected to have a fifty-seven percent fund balance. So, so we could go without any revenues for over six months and be fine, which seems excessive to me. At the end of 2024, um, the estimate was thirty-four percent. Can you explain why we are maintaining such a high fund balance?
We're trying to spend down that fund balance, um, which is what the, we're, have a twelve million dollar deficit budget, so we're trying to spend down that fund balance. It would be, uh, fifty, fifty-one million dollar fund balance if we weren't spending in a deficit. The reason that that fund bound, that that excess, um, cash reserves, excess fund balance exists is because in 2023, the city did not spend all of their budget. And we, so we received money that we did not spend the entire budget and the cash balance grew over what it was when you, uh, when you projected the fund balance during your 2023 budget hearings. You can, hopefully had a projected fund balance at the end of 2020, during your 2023 budget hearings for 2024. The actual cash reserves at the end of 2024 was higher than what was projected. Some pros of, pros of that happening is that having excess fund balance means you are a very fiscally healthy city. There are pros and cons. You're fiscally healthy. You have revenues coming in probably over your projected revenues. You're spending your budget, um, you're spending less of your budget than you actually budgeted. You maybe need less budget, but, but that also points to the cons. What are you not budgeting? What are you budgeting for that maybe you didn't need to budget for? And then really think about what you should be budgeting for that will get spent. Like, um, for bonding, having a cash balance in your general fund is really, really great. Like I was explaining to, uh, Councilor Flaherty earlier, this goes back to the general fund. When you do bond and rating agencies always ask you, what is your fund balance? And having a high fund balance shows that you're fiscally healthy. Um, you can, you have, there's, there's no risk of you not being able to pay your bondholders and pay your bills. Um, but again, we don't want the fund balance to be getting too high because that means that we're not funding projects, um, that, that need to be done in the city. Um, it, it looks like maybe you're holding on to money that should be spent, you know, on things the taxpayers need. So I'm sure all of you have, you know, more ideas about the pros and cons.
But it seems like our fund balance is increasing, the percentage of reserves are increasing quite a lot between last year thirty-four percent and this, in 2025, fifty-seven percent. It's like we're, we're going up when you're, you're trying to spend down. And we have such pressing needs in our community. I'm just puzzled by fifty-seven percent. I've never, I've been here a long time. I've never seen that high a, of reserve or fund balance projected at the end of the year.
Uh, my only comment would be, we don't want that either. We want to spend that down. We would like to have a more reasonable fund balance. This is our effort in, for the 2025 budget. We are spending it down by twelve million dollars. And we will continue to monitor that fund balance and report to you where we are. We're, we need to report to you on how much of the 2024 ba, um, budget has been spent. What is the actual fund balance as we close 2024? There are sort of lots of financial markers that we can look at along the way to kind of see how are we doing on our fund balance. So we are, um, in agreement that it is an important financial marker to watch and kind of have consensus on where we want that to be.
Okay, maybe I'll, I'll talk, uh, individually with you about that. Um, I have other questions, but they're on different topics.
I, I, just go ahead.
Okay. Um, so, uh, the ED Lit, um, budget seems to be less this, for 2025 than for 2024 by about two hundred seventeen thousand dollars. Why is that?
Um, in the ED Lit budget, we moved some things to make the budget work. We ended up moving a few things to the PS Lit budget. Um, and in moving those, that's kind of just the way that it ended up. It wasn't intentional that we needed to be two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars less in the ED Lit budget. But when we were trying to kind of consolidate, sort of like expenses into a, a proper fund, um, we had discussions with police and fire about, yes, we could, you know, this had been funded in ED Lit in the past and this year we can fund it in the PS Lit with your public safety dollars, um, from that Lit Fund. And that seemed more appropriate, so that's where we put some things. Um, I, nothing specific as to what it was really comes to mind. I think it was in the three hundreds, so it was probably a variety of supplies that they need. And that's, that's the reason behind that.
And what is the fund balance projected for that ED Lit? Sorry, I could probably find it in here somewhere, but.
Three point six million. And that's a twenty-two percent of, um, the, uh, 2025 expenditures. Three point six million fund balance.
For the end of this year or the end of next year?
End of next year.
Thank you. And then I have one more question and this may be for the mayor's office. So in the, uh, memo, the, the mayor's memo on, um, the changes that have been made to the budget, um, since budget week, which I very much appreciate that collaboration, for, uh, a hundred fifty thousand dollars more was added for sidewalks, which is great. Then it says, "We agree a sidewalk plan could be added to transportation plan with philosophy slash criteria developed by interdepartmental sidewalk committee and of council vote to add it to the plan." So it, it, it's the word could that bothers me just a tiny bit. I would like to have a commitment that we will have a sidewalk plan. Is that, can the mayor's office speak to that briefly, please?
We will. It's just a, just a wording. I wrote it that way. Should have said, "We will." Uh, we had talked about it, saying, "Yes, we agree with the suggestion. We will."
Very good. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. I wanna just revisit the, uh, the surplus, um, well, the reserve accounts. Uh, I for one don't, don't mind a higher reserve account. I think we live in a volatile world right now. But what do you mean by a more reasonable? But what do you mean by a more reasonable number?
I mean, I mean, it's really open to interpretation. I guess what I was thinking, a reasonable number, the city has traditionally done 30%. You know, strived for 30%. You know, GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association recommends at least two months. It's really what this city is comfortable with, you know, in terms of like what our financial markers are. Maybe we could even, you know, think about, if we want to think about our bonding and how that would affect, you know, our bond capacity. There's just a lot of pros and cons to consider, so I think that it's still open to a conversation.
Yeah, I'd like that conversation. I'd like to maybe, you know, game out some scenarios where, I don't know, gas prices suddenly go up dramatically for some geopolitical reason, and say it doubles diesel prices. Do we just turn back bus service dramatically, or do we have something to draw on? You know, things like that, I think, might be helpful to think about. I have one other question, and that is, where do you park those reserves? I mean, I assume you've got it in an accessible account, but it must be low risk, but yet drawing interest. I just wonder where we put those funds.
Right now, all of our cash, so all the cash we get in throughout the year, and that includes cash that we're spending and cash that sort of is in reserve, is, are in bank accounts, and they are earning interest. There's other options that the city could explore for investments as well.
If it's in an accessible bank account, it's probably drawing very low interest?
It's actually drawing quite, it's drawing very good interest, surprisingly. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Great. I'd like to maybe know that number sometime because I'm curious about what the implications are of, you know, having a reserve and where it goes and how much.
That number may change soon, so I will definitely get that updated number.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We had a question about the digital equity fund. Is it okay if you, can you just explain what that is?
Yep. The digital equity fund is a small fund, so it comes from, we have a single payer TIF called the Meridian TIF or the Hoosier Fiber Network TIF. Hoosier Fiber, Meridium is the single payer. They pay this, they, part of the, there's a very detail, a very like in-depth agreement with them that Larry Allen could give you more details on, wherein Meridium, Hoosier Fiber Network pays the city, I think, $85,000 a year, and it is specifically to fund a position that ensures that digital equity is being achieved with the Hoosier Fiber Network, the fiber that's being installed in the city. Okay, thank you.
And I did also just want to say for the commenter that if you go to bloomington.in.gov/digital-equity, you can see what we do. There's a strategic plan there, right? And they can read a little more about it there. Thank you. Other questions from council members? Okay. We can now, thank you so much. Whoa, I'm sorry. Okay. I was going to, was that-
No, I have more questions. I was just done the first time.
Okay, go ahead. Sure, okay.
Thank you. Sorry to startle you. I had asked multiple departments in the Controller's Office about former CREED dollar expenditures. So the community, I always forget what CREED stands for, sort of a downtown economic development tool that we harnessed and captured some income but never spent it. And we retired the separate fund it was held in, but the council requested, thanks to Council, former Councilman Rowland, in part, who I see in the audience, that we account for those separately, so that like we could use them on capital projects primarily in the downtown area, like the original intent was, even though we didn't do that in this, you know, the original sort of statutory timeline for that fund. I appreciate the updates on those fronts from different departments about where the funds are being spent. There was a note that there was just over 12 million of former CREED dollars appropriated in the 2024 budget. There was a note, and I think your answer is, Controller McClellan, that to date, or at least at the date of the answer, about 3.3 million had been spent, but that no new CREED-specific projects are identified in '25 because the departments intend to spend all their CREED funds in '24. And then, I guess, first part, is that still the case? Is that, yeah?
They're trying as hard as they can to spend all the CREED funds in 2024. What they don't spend, we are still tracking it separately within the general fund. It's not part of this budget, which means if it's not spent, it is actually available sort of like cash balance next year, and we will come back to you and ask for an additional appropriation of CREED dollars. We will give you a report of what was spent in '24 against sort of like, you know, the 12 million that was budgeted, so you can see what is left. And then we're going to be asking for whatever is left to kind of reappropriate to those departments to continue those kinds of projects. We even hope to have a report along those lines at the end of the year, you know, before we even close out the year for you.
Got it. Yeah, and so, thank you. And I think Planning and Transportation in particular noted they had 1.55 million that they maybe don't think they're going to be able to encumber by the end of the year, and that would revert, but we'll track all that and discuss. And one last related question on that front, which is, do you recall approximately how much, so we've appropriated 12 million in the 2024 budget, there was also a balance still remaining in the general fund that we were accounting for. Do you recall approximately in millions what that was?
Well, I don't, I don't know that there was a balance. My understanding is there isn't a balance of unbudgeted, like unappropriated CREED that in 2020. So I will follow up with you because my understanding is different than yours.
Yeah, notes and files as well. I could be incorrect, but I thought there was a small amount left.
What do you mean, sorry, may I have a follow-up? What do you mean by small? Like, what am I looking for?
Two to four million.
Okay, thank you.
Relative to the total amount. I could be, again, I could be wrong about that. I had a question, too, about $250,000 in the CFRD budget that was in the Parking Meter Fund that appeared to be for maybe downtown outreach grants, I think.
I think so.
And my reading of Bloomington Municipal Code is that that's maybe not an allowed use of the Parking Meter Fund. I think we have interpreted the Parking Meter Fund pretty widely to apply to most street-related upgrades, but it's really been, you know, infrastructure-focused in nature. And so while I think the outreach grants are relevant to the, you know, parking meter zone, so to speak, and speaking not at all about the value of those grants or their importance, just from a, you know, compliance with code standpoint, do you have any more follow-up thoughts on that at this time?
I don't have any follow-up at this time, other than I need to follow up and make sure that that's really what that 250K is, and then we'll follow up and look at the ordinance and see where we are on that.
Okay.
It was done in the past, wasn't it?
Yeah. This is maybe the first time I've caught it, you know, or looked at it closely enough, but-
That's okay. We'll look at it.
What would, if in fact, we agree that it is not an allowable use under Bloomington Code, how would we go about identifying something that was and basically using some, you know, like swap funds to balance that? Like, what would that look like?
So we're gonna, okay, so there's 250K in the Parking Meter Fund, and it's going to be, and it's in the CFRD department, and it's going to be in the 300s. So 300s is other services and charges. And so, you know, it would really come back to analyzing that Parking Meter ordinance, that code, and deciding. We would have to have council action to say-
We'd have to transfer money from one, like, since it's already in the budget this way, is it too late to change it before the adoption meeting next week?
No, it's not too late.
Oh, okay.
Because it's in, oh, wait, well, if we leave it in Parking Meter Fund, we could just move it to a different department.
Right. We could potentially have an amendment next week that could address this, or two weeks from now.
Yes, we could do that.
Thank you. Well, let's follow up then. And then, last question. Do you know if the Sustainable commuter benefit is a taxable benefit?
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Isabel?
Well, I just have a point of information. So I pulled up the memo from the Hamilton administration last September about the CREED funds, and it says that there were $17 million remaining, and 12 million, $75,000 were budgeted. So there must be about $5 million left.
All right. I will look into that and get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Quiet, quiet. Okay. Okay, let's move to, I think, public comment. So if anyone in chambers or on Zoom would like to comment, raise your hand or step up to the podium. And I would like to say, the public comment of the deliberation of this item will constitute the statutorily required public hearing on the city budget for 2025. So far, we have one person in chambers. Welcome.
And, sorry, if you are on Zoom, you can comment by raising your hand. Right now, there are no takers.
Thanks.
Thank you. My name is Steve Olon, and because my name was invoked, I thought I'd get up and talk about what Councilmember Pymont Smith just mentioned. That's my understanding, too, is that the CREED had about $17 million, and in the last budget, the previous administration spent 12 million of it. Many of the items that they spent money on were unobjectionable in principle. I was trying to represent the interests of the district I represented, which included the entirety of the CREED. Now, in the redrawing, the CREED district, if it still existed, would be split between Councilmember Zulik and Councilmember Rosenbarger's districts, mostly in the latter's district. But I'm still keen, and on that last $5 million, I did present a resolution which was adopted by the council last year to recommend the idea of a circulator downtown, which will be an appropriate use, appropriate dedication of funds to the CREED district, which it pretty much is the duplicate of the downtown footprint. And the money would largely go to three electric buses, two of which would run regularly, one which would be a spare. That capital cost is a perfect use of that money in its original intent, but I'm just trying to establish that regardless of what we think about the money, the original intent of it in 2003 was to serve the needs of the place where it was drawn. That's generally a principle I've always found to be appropriate in government, is to try to keep the money where it was generated, keep special dollars where it was generated. And so a circulator is a kind of idea that would serve everybody in multiple ways. It is at once an infrastructure and an operating cost. I believe that another appropriate way to keep funding a circulator after the, what I put forward, not only funded three buses, but also a year's worth of service at the highest level, at the most frequent level. We are way overdue on reconsidering parking meter charges. The parking meters haven't changed since a dollar an hour, which was set in 2013. That's now roughly 77 cents of $2013. So simple raising by, for inflation would, should be enough to fund the circulator ongoing. And that's a good way to tie transportation revenues together. Anyway, I just wanted to mention all that and say that I agree that that money should be set aside for a circulator. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Up next in council chambers.
Hello. My name is Joe Davis. Thank you for listening to my input. First off, I want to say that the Resolution of the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission for the CIB budget to be appropriated out of the food and beverage taxes should not be adopted into the current budget. The CIB has been irresponsible. This past 16th of the month, they held a public information forum. It was for public input on the proposed notions of the, for the expansion. There was only one hour to provide input. There was not public notice nor public recording. I spoke with Katz TV. They reached out to the CIB to ask if they needed coverage. They said, "No, we've got it." And there was no recording, none whatsoever. Joe Wren from Indiana Public Media did a copy piece, but it was not serving the public. This is foolhardy to propose creating a circus circus in Bloomington when we can put this gleaming beacon of justice, this magic kingdom of justice, right there in that location. Line item 9513, the LIT Economic Development, in total over the two years for the '24 and '25 budget, is $25.5 million. Surely, some of that could be used toward more responsible social equity and justice initiatives, like solving the real problems in Bloomington, not giving a raise to everyone who is working at the city because of excess budgets. We need tax relief. Our community is hurting. Once again, the food and beverage tax, over the two, over the next two years, '24, '25, total $6 million, $6 million. That could go a long way toward helping resolve these pressing issues in our community where we build this magic kingdom of justice in that location, and we solve our problems locally. Please do not pass the budget as is. It needs amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any speakers on Zoom? No. Okay, anyone else in council chambers? Back to council for any additional questions or comments on the civil city budget today? Obie?
I'll just comment really fast that I really appreciate the additions that were made for transportation and engineering projects in support of the Safe Streets for All initiatives. So thanks for working that out.
Sydney, and then Matt?
I just want to say thank you to Controller McClellan for meeting with me today privately about to go bonds. I wasn't able to make the original meeting, so I really appreciate her answering all my questions. And I also appreciate Mayor Thompson taking into our account some of our sidewalk priorities. So thank you both.
Thank you. I think I'll reserve most comments maybe for two weeks when we have the adoption hearing, but I wanted to echo the thanks to Mayor Thompson and the administration for working with council members over the last six weeks or whatever it was, to make some relatively minor but critical adjustments, in my view, to the budget. I think overall, this is the most productive period between budget hearings and adoption hearing that I've experienced as a council member. I don't think we're there yet. We've got ways to go. I think we've got process improvements galore to make, but I appreciate the efforts, and I think we've made progress. One thing, I was going through the questions again that I asked in written form, and I'd asked about a cut through that was in the Parks Department budget on Third Street in the Rose Hill Cemetery, to kind of connect that. It's something I was aware Bike Pod Safety Commission had been asking about for years, to have basically a non-Kirkwood option for getting folks kind of from further out, further in, you know, without being in danger from a, on a busy street that really has no facilities at all. And there was kind of resistance. It took a long time. There was, you know, questions of whether it was appropriate to have folks going through a cemetery, also, although a lot of people use it for walking and things. And I don't know if it was a funding thing, but I was really astounded by Tim Street's answer, which was that they'd known about this need for years, and then in the summer of 2023, a police chase ended with a vehicle smashed through the limestone perimeter wall of the cemetery in the exact spot conducive to making a connection. Since we were repairing the wall, we repaired- Since we were repairing the wall, we repaired it with an opening that would be accessible to walkers and rollers, but did not yet have the funds budgeted to complete the asphalt or concrete connection to the sidewalk. They're working with engineering on the exact nature of the connection and whether it will connect to the protected, curb-protected bike lane that also goes on that curve of Third Street. I just thought that was astounding, worth sharing. But I also wanted to advocate for connection to the protected bike lane. I think that's really important, not just the sidewalk, because it's a really important bicycle connection, actually, again, to address the known safety challenges on Kirkwood. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you interim attorney Kulak for putting the timer on just in case. We have our five minutes each, and Dave, you are up next.
Thank you. So I'll just, two comments really. The first is, and let me say, I'll be passing this evening just simply because I think that my first point is an important one, and I'd like that resolved. And that is, if we're adding nearly a million dollars to the transportation budget, I think I would like to see that we have council oversight of those funds. It was always, or one time, it was always important for any alteration, major alterations of streets to be overseen by the elected body. But that's not to say if I pass tonight that I don't think that this is a good budget, which I do. And I, in particular, after spending about at least seven years pleading for public safety compensation, I'm really gratified to see that it's being addressed by this administration. And likewise, that proper compensation is being, that has been missing the last few years. At a time of high inflation, we didn't see it reflected in the COLA in the last few years. And so I'm very happy that this is being addressed by this administration now. So just in lieu of getting in further information about the nearly million dollars spent for, in the transportation fund, I think this is a good budget, but I'll be passing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Isabel?
Yeah, I agree with, I don't remember which council member said it, but that the process has been very productive between the end of the budget presentations and the final budget proposal that came out Friday. I think we did have some good conversations and collaboration with the mayor's administration. And I appreciate that very much. You know, with all of the questions that I asked that are in this packet and all the questions that I've asked during Budget Week, I sometimes didn't see the forest for the trees. And now I'm looking at a cash balance of fifty-seven percent in our general fund at the end, by the end of 2025. And that just seems excessive to me when we have such dire, dire needs in our community, especially in regard to taking care of neighbors who are unhoused. So I want to better understand this decision. I don't expect, of course, that it'll change anything, but that does bother me. And I don't understand why that is. I understand it's a deficit budget of twelve million. But I also understand that we could make significant long-term impact by spending more money in the short term as far as unhoused people go. So I don't, I don't know. Maybe I'll just abstain as well at this point because I really want to understand that better. Or maybe I'll just vote yes because, of course, I'm not going to scuttle the whole budget in this case because I think there are very good things in the budget. I would just like to be spending more. And we can always do that next year as additional appropriations as well. So I would like to have those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll just say too, I want to mostly echo what everyone has said here in the room. Aside from Sydney, I did not have the meeting yesterday, but thank you for the meeting, the public. It was actually yesterday, too. I didn't, we didn't do the one-on-one, but thank you. That is exciting about the Rose Hill. I haven't looked at that answer yet. It does feel like shovel-ready now, and that is exciting. I know we love our shovel-ready projects. I hope everyone was okay, though, in that crash. And I also really appreciate what has happened between the introduction of the budget and now it does feel like pleasant collaboration. And I appreciate the changes and additions very much. So thank you, thank you to the administration for that. Okay, and now, do we have a motion?
If we're ready for a motion, I would move to forward a recommendation to the council that appropriation ordinance 2024-05 be adopted.
Okay, Clerk Bolden, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Sossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Epstein.
Ruff?
Yes.
Pied, or Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Okay, up next, okay, so that was eight zero one for a recommendation to adopt. Up next, we have an update from the city controller about general obligation bonds. So Controller McClellan, if you would like to come back up to the podium, we are ready for you.
Good evening again, council. Controller McClellan, to give you an update on the bonds. We had a meeting two days ago, yesterday, it has been, like, it seemed like it's a long time ago, with Reedy Financial Group, who is our fiduciary, that their job is to make sure, a fiduciary's job is to make sure that we don't do anything that is financially dangerous for us. And Baird, they're the underwriters, and their job is to make sure that we get the best possible interest rate and the best possible credit rating on our bond. They came to talk to us about the possibility of doing a GO bond. They talked to us about how they work with many other municipalities, small municipalities in Indiana that are in the same situation we are in. It's where, when their, their tax levy can only grow by a small percent. We're growing by four percent, but their AV grows by a lot. And what that means is that your tax, your tax rate is going to go down. And so we want to keep our tax rate the same, which is the same kind of policy that a lot of cities have. And to do that, the Indiana allows units to take on debt. And that's, that debt is going to be part, now part of our tax rate. We already have five GO bonds in the county's portfolio of loans. A bond is like a loan, and we're paying those off. And so this would be adding another one. The city also has a constitutional debt limit, and we are well below with our, below our constitutional debt limit. And so we talked about how adding this GO bond would kind of satisfy like a few desires of the city. We desire to not lose our tax rate. And but if we lose, if our tax rate goes down, we're losing revenue. We want to keep our tax rate the same. We would lose about three point seven million dollars if we don't do, take on debt to keep our tax rate the same. We also desire to do more, more projects. And so a bond is perfect for like one-time capital projects, kind of fills that need. You can't bond for salaries. And so the, the financial analyst kind of gave us an outline that I think was shared with you in like a very small packet of what we could do short term. They kind of gave us what the project fund, how much money we could get from a bond would be if we did one year, two years, three years. And the idea is that, is that next year, which is, which would be year one, you kind of max out your bond payment, and that would be about three point seven million dollars. But we could, we could make our bond fund a little bit bigger and have a smaller bond payment in year two. If we wanted to go to year three, we could, the bond could be a little bit bigger, and we would have one more smaller payment in year three. And what that allows for the city to do is if we want to bond again, we still have room in our bonding capacity in year two, three, and for the next twenty years. We still have room, we can do this project. We can, we can bond for this, you know, loan, get these bond funds, be able to make our bond payments in year one, have small, very small bond payments in year two or three, and still have the ability to consider bigger projects down the road. So that's kind of just like the thirty thousand-foot view. You all asked great questions in the meeting. There is a recording of the meeting that I think was sent to you. I highly encourage you to watch it. If you watch it and you have more questions and you want to follow up with me in person or on email, I welcome that. The timeline for this bond was not talked about in the meeting, and I do have that with me. We're here today to kind of give another update. We had sort of a work session to learn about the bonding process. And so we have, we, the city, we've got until the middle of October to kind of get our ducks in a row, to write a bond ordinance. But we need input from you. I think, I think our process is going to be, we need input from you on how big, how many years you want to do this, how many years you'd like to have a bond. We would like to present to you something that makes sense to you. So what makes the sense to the city is to do what is listed in these, this summary of financing options, year, two-year bond, which would be about four point eight five million dollars. That was, that's what makes sense to us. That would make sense with the capital projects that are in the budget and some extra projects that are not in the budget. So I think we're, this is, I think, just a discussion. And I think where we are is, I've shared a list with the council of what our proposal of what those projects could be. Maybe we need some follow-up on exactly, I think I, I think I sent it, I can send it again. And, and I, and yeah, that's, that is my overview. I would, I think we'd be beneficial to have questions if you have any. I'd be happy to take those.
Are there any questions?
Looking at Dave.
Isabel?
Yeah, thank you, Controller McClellan. I was unable to attend the meeting yesterday. I am curious, I'm most curious about how the list of projects will be identified. You said you had a list. I don't know that I got it, but I get a lot of emails, so I'll check again.
Okay.
How will that list be finalized? How much input will you seek from the council on that? And second part of the question is, how, how strong a commitment is it if we put a project list and then something happens and the administration decides to do something else? Is that, what would happen in that case?
The bond ordinance, bond ordinances are usually not very specific so that you have a lot of projects that are allowed in the bond. And I think that if, I think that it would just depend on how the bond ordinance is written and, written as far as if, you know, what projects the city did with that bond.
And then how, how will you engage with council on a final list of projects?
I'm happy to send that to you.
Does that mean the project list is already final?
No. No.
So you're eager to get feedback from us once we see the preliminary list?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Deputy Mayor Knapp?
Hi, in the email that I sent to council members that had the summary of the changes, there was an attachment that had capital expenses. And then I believe I sent a corrected email after that with the corrected capital expenses. And what it did, what that spreadsheet did, and if we can't find it, I'll be happy to send it again. But it listed all, the controller had pulled out all of the capital expenses that were in the budget and some that were not in the budget and made a list showing a, the title of the file was 2025 Capital Expenses Corrected. A list that was highlighted in orange for the projects that she recommended to put in the bond. And then there were other projects that were in the budget. And there was a note for each item about whether it was in the budget or in the, or proposed for the bond. So I think that, you know, what we'd suggest, and clearly, I don't know what happened along the way there, but we'll resend that. And then you can look at it and see the list and see if there's, you know, any changes that you would like to talk with us about. And in terms of your question of, you know, what happens if an item doesn't get done, you know, we're in a trust-building mode with you. And so the purpose of doing this bond is to get the projects done that we agreed are important. And, you know, I don't see any, if there was any reason why we wouldn't do those projects unless there was, you know, some reason why an infrastructure project couldn't be completed because of another, an outside condition, something beyond our control. And we would want to, you know, stay in good faith with you and bring the project back and say, you know, we can't do this item that we had talked about and put on the list. What else is on the list that we'd like to do?
Okay, I can't find that memo, but
We'll resend it.
We sent it, yeah. Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, you said, oh, I'm gonna, okay, Dave, and then Matt. Okay, Dave, you're up.
I'm up. Just a quick question. I know that a lot of cities in Indiana have utilized general obligation bonds to greater or lesser degree. Some are trying to kind of pare that back. Other ones are utilizing them. We're, we're talking here about relatively small scale at this point and sort of testing it. I think it's, I think you make a good point about our tax rate, and we want to maintain that. I saw somewhere, maybe your administration sent it, or I remember in the past, we had information regarding our tax rate relative to other Indiana cities. You probably have that. Could, if you do, could you send it to the council? Just because people, you know, would say, well, why wouldn't? Why, why wouldn't we just let taxes fall? But we already, I don't want to say under tax because people are going to, you know, it's in the eye of the beholder, but in terms of the relative, contextually speaking, Bloomington is, I think, on the low end, as I recall.
That's correct.
So that would be helpful to have that maybe for us and for the public record as well in case people make that point. So, thank you. And thanks for that meeting. It was helpful.
Thank you. Thank, we now have the corrected one. And so I'm taking a look. I think I'll need more time to review and give thoughts and feedbacks. We'll have to figure out a process for that. But my question was following up on what Isabel shared. There's context here, which we've sort of collectively, let's say, gotten into trouble as a city in the past, I think, by writing very, very broad bond ordinances. Circumstances do change, you know, and I think that's the idea. But the, to give some, give us some flexibility. But the types of changes we've seen, you know, for instance, a member of the public, Greg Alexander, has come in here a number of times over the years, highlighting how there have been multiple repeated bonded commitments for building a safe pedestrian and bicycle path through Cascades Park. And that still has not come to fruition, even though the council tried to fund it multiple times because money didn't go as far as they thought and, you know, or they decided there was another project that was technically eligible in the broad language of the bond that they decided to prioritize it on, but quite different than what was presented to the council. And so I appreciate Deputy Mayor Knapp's note that, you know, our repeated engagements are a trust-building exercise. And this is one of the areas where trust has been severely eroded, I would say, historically, by the disparities between what we approve by the disparities between what we approve and are presented and then what is implemented on bonding fronts. And so I share that by way of noting that, like, my understanding is we can write bond ordinances and the accompanying exhibits very narrowly to be a specific, exact set of projects. And then if circumstances do change, that we are able to amend the bond ordinance to add new projects, which, which just probably sets us all structurally up better for success because it doesn't leave it to discretion interpretation. It's, you know, it's not so much anyway. And I guess, I'm curious about your, your thoughts about that approach to actually much more narrowly tailoring the bond ordinance with the idea that if we need to change it in the future, we can do that through amendment. And B, I don't know if you can speak to the legality of that. That was my understanding from a conversation with our bond counsel and legal counsel, Marjorie Rice, some months ago. But I, I haven't followed up, you know, extensively on it. But curious for your thoughts on this.
Yeah, sure. I just made a note, be specific. You know, let's, let's look at a bond ordinance that's really specific. You know, there's, every city out there has their own style of how they like to do bond ordinances. And there's nothing that says we can't do something, do it that way. So
You're not, oh, go ahead.
I'm not opposed to it. And the first place I would look is the county because I know, I, I think that they may have very specific, they may have a very specific list of projects. So maybe, you know, something, that could be a model. So we'll look. And then we could definitely present something that's specific. Because, you know, having projects on the list that for whatever reason, sometimes outside of your control, cannot be completed the way you thought. And then coming back to council and asking for amendment to that bond ordinance is very transparent. And it's very clear and it's, everybody's on the same page. And I, to me, that is a preferred method. So I have absolutely no problem with that.
Are you able to speak to the, or confirm the legality of that approach? That you can amend a bond ordinance, you know, let's say, years after the bond has been issued? If circumstances change, you need to pursue something not contemplated at the time of passage?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, that, yeah. There are some steps you have to take, like financially, just to verify that you, that those bond proceeds really are supposed, you know, that they were spent correctly in the first place. You know, there's some spending tests you have to pass. And then, then you proceed with your bond ordinance. So yes, that's definitely legal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. So I think that is it. This was just something on our agenda for tonight as a discussion. So I guess, if no objections, I don't think we need to do any public comment on it and we can move on to what's next. Okay, head nods, great, thank you. So up next, we have a discussion about elected officials' salaries for 2025. Isabel, do you want to? Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. So the city council, per Indiana code, is responsible for setting the salaries for elected officials of the city of Bloomington. In the past, it's, it's something that was brought forward by the mayor's administration, but per code, it's actually our responsibility. So we had talked about, of course, the Crowe salary study has been a topic that we've discussed thoroughly as far, as far as appointed city employees. And we, during the, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. What I'm trying to say is Crowe was engaged by the city to do a large salary study. After the city council memo to the administration about some of our priorities, where it was mentioned that we would like a study of elected officials' salaries, Shar Paycheck from Human Resources reached out to Crowe to ask them to add that to, or to, to make that an additional part of their contract. And so Crowe came back with a proposal at the, at a cost of $13,000. And you can see here in the memo that I issued in the packet that the initial proposal was just to find publicly available information about up to six cities or jurisdictions to compare salaries of city council members, the mayor and the clerk. They were not planning to do any analysis of workloads, of staff support models, number of meetings per month, et cetera. They would just provide the ranges of pay of those six comparator cities. So after Director Paycheck sent that to me, and Councilmember Stossberg was also interested, so she also received this, it, it seemed to me that that was totally insufficient to actually form a basis for our decisions regarding salaries for elected officials. So I asked them to include at least these four other things, which, which are, does the city council propose and write legislation? Or do they only react to mayor's, mayoral legislation? Does the city council have standing committees with regular meetings? And how many such committees each council member is assigned to? Whether the city council is responsible for interviewing residents for service on boards and commissions? And whether city council members are assigned other duties, such as service on the local solid waste board, economic development corporations, et cetera? Just to get a sense of the workload that council members have in other communities and how that compares to our workload here. So the focus was, as a council member, my focus was on the council member comparison. And then you'll see in the memo that Crowe came back with and said they, they would do, which may come with a higher price tag. So they said they would develop a matrix of 15 cities. But again, they would not really look into anything that's not public record. So it says Crowe does not envision prorating or otherwise adjusting market data based on each city's data related to the four new factors that I just mentioned. So it would just be used, that additional data about, you know, time and effort that council spends would only be used to select cities for comparison. And then Crowe would use their salaries unadjusted to determine market ranges. So in addition, I will just say, market ranges, when you come, talk about elected officials, is kind of a strange concept to me because you're running for office of a particular city. You're not, like, shopping around, oh, I'm going to move to Hammond because they pay more. So the market is kind of a strange thing, in my view. So what I'd like to talk about with my colleagues tonight, and with the mayor's administration and the city clerk, is, first of all, is the revised Crowe proposal satisfactory to the council as a means of gaining useful data for setting elected official salaries for 2025? And is the cost of at least $13,000 worth this study? Number two, if not, what are our other options? We could go back to Crowe, ask for further revisions. We can do an in-house study of salaries. And Clerk Bolden has already compiled a list of salaries in second-class cities plus some additional information that was shared. So that would be a start, or could be a start. Or we could forego any further study, or I'm open to other options people might suggest. And then number three, and this is also important, who should work with Director Paycheck, the mayor, or her representative, and the city clerk to actually draft the ordinance? We might need an ad hoc committee or designate one person or whatever you, you think is appropriate. So I don't know, Kate, how we should go from here.
Okay, I think we should just open it up to council for comments and questions, right? I don't, I don't, this is just, I don't, I don't think we should have like a question period and then a comment period. We are Committee of the Whole, so the rules about time limits are that you cannot speak for more than five minutes at a time, but there is no limit to how many five minutes you take. Although, we all know we like to not go leave here late at night, okay? So I think I will just start with Dave, okay? Because he's got his hand up.
Yeah, and I'll be brief. I think it's important to have an objective view. So I'm appreciative that we are getting the data that we will from Crowe. If there is a, an information needed about what our duties entail, it seems to me that we had a similar study done, gosh, six or eight years ago. And it was fairly involved, and it involved interviews and describing what we did in office and so forth. So that, and I'm not sure whether it was Crowe or not, I don't recall. But that information must exist somewhere in HR or in the, in the, in the public record somewhere. So perhaps that could be utilized as a way of expanding the data set so that Crowe has more information to work on. Because I assume that our duties are similar, if not the same, as what we entailed in that salary study. So that might be helpful. So I think, and I'm perfectly at peace with the, the additional cost. I think it's, it's needed. So I appreciate, appreciate this discussion. And I think we should proceed on it and maybe expand the data set if we have that information that we could, that we could give to the, to Crowe.
Okay, thank you. And we, of course, we can say whatever we want. It's Committee of the Whole. Do you, were you saying, though, you're in favor of the revised Crowe study? Or are you, I'm just, that's one of Isabel's questions. Or do you know yet if?
Okay, I, what I, so I'm, I'm favorable to the, the additions, I guess, of their consideration as described by, by Isabel. I'm just thinking that if people are hesitant about whether to proceed with those kind of limited parameters, maybe they, maybe, you know, we could find that information that came in the previous salary, salary study about the duties and the work that, that our offices entail. And, and that might be helpful. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for clarifying. Anyone up here want to say, Sidney, did you?
This is a very awkward conversation for me, like, as someone who, I, I would assume makes the least in terms of household income on this body, probably by far, as this is my current only source of income. So for me, I don't really understand why the Crowe study wouldn't include cost of living per city. Bloomington is a very expensive place to live. It's an expensive place to rent in. It's an expensive place to buy a house. And I think that if we are going to go with the study, we have to include that. But in light of the fact that this is mostly public information, I would prefer to save money and do an in-house study. But yeah, it's just awkward for me personally.
Thank you for that. I think, Matt, you, did you have your hand up? Okay.
Thank you. I think, yeah, I have concerns about the Crowe study, I guess. I agree that what was proposed seems just like useful information, but probably something we could pretty easily compile in-house if we haven't already. And it seems very limited in like what we can actually conclude from it. I appreciate Isabel's effort to bring in additional factors, though I do worry a little bit is how they are framed now won't necessarily elicit the information we want either. So, for example, whether the city council proposes legislation or only reacts to mayoral legislation. Like, that's framed as a binary, but this is a spectrum. Like, how active is the legislative body? How actively are council members bringing things by, by numbers? I mean, maybe it's assumed that we would actually have metrics for that. You know, the, the presence of various committees and how many committees folks serve on, how active are the committees is, is another relevant factor. I think similarly with, you know, serving on other bodies, like, so the, the frequency of meetings and the, the, basically kind of the amount of time that council members are expected, based on our approach to city government here in Bloomington culturally, are expected to spend, is a very relevant factor that seems extremely difficult to elicit from publicly available information, which is kind of what the Crowe, Crowe study proposes. I think it probably will take some interviews and conversations if we wanted to really dig in and do that right. And so I have some hesitancy about the utility of, of the Crowe studies approach, or Crowe's proposed approach, rather, to study, even in, in the expanded formulation proposed by Isabel. So I've got some concerns there. I think it would be helpful probably to define what the factors are that are, that will inform our judgments about, about salaries. I think we've never really done this. You know, Sidney just mentioned one of them. Bloomington cost of living should be a factor. I agree with that. I think, you know, again, frequency of our, our meetings, that sort of thing, and a reflection of actual time spent in comparison to other cities' work, workloads. I think another important question we should grapple with is the accessibility of being able to serve on council. It is something of a, of a privilege in general to serve the public, of course. But also, I mean, like, it tends to favor folks with, with some type of privilege to be able to serve in this capacity. We've had a lot of, I think, retirees over time for that reason, because it frees up time. It's very difficult to maintain a full-time job, or especially a demanding one that doesn't have a lot of flexible hours and serve and do it, you know, on council. And, and so a lot of folks end up doing flexible things, taking gaps, you know, getting part-time jobs. The point is that, like, this is often the, the majority of folks' income if they're focusing on this. And I, I think the approach to having a cost of living adjustment for, for what is a part-time salary also is probably the wrong framework. Like, I think the idea of a percentage of the mayor's salary makes more sense because it accounts for the fact that it's envisioned to be a part-time job, not a full-time job on council. So that, that addresses some of the systematic deflation of the council salary through cost of living adjustments over time. All of these things are, I don't know, the more I think about, like, setting up a framework for how we would make decisions on this, I think those types of things are important to define. And then having the data we need to do that. I know, in particular, Clerk Bolden has compiled a lot of data over time, not, not, not just with respect to, like, salaries for councils and mayors and clerks, but also time spent, how committees are used. Like, she, she's, she and her staff have gone through that exercise previously in the context of discussions about committees here with the council. And so I think we have a lot to draw on in-house, work that's been done. I'm not familiar with the study that Dave referenced from six or eight years ago, but I'd be curious to learn more about that. So I think those are my thoughts about both the Crowe potential and the things we should be considering in making these decisions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Courtney?
Yeah, just briefly to go on record, I'm not breaking new ground here, but I agree with my colleagues. I don't think it's a good use of, of our money to spend on this Crowe study because they're not factoring in a lot of the really important things that would be factored in. So I agree, that's all.
Thank you. Hopi?
Yeah, I essentially agree as well. I think that, I'll just be a little blunt and say, I think that it's a $13,000 waste of money based on what it is that they presented, that they would provide for us. And even with the revised approach, I, I just don't, we want whatever happens to be useful. And I don't see them providing anything useful right now. And I appreciate what Councilmember Raula said about, or Dave, you know, I'm not used to that up on this stage, said about, you know, you, you want it to be like independent, right? You want to make sure it's free from bias. But I'm not sure how much more free from bias you can get just looking at bare numbers. I mean, that's pretty free from bias. And I don't see what Crowe is proposing as really telling us anything other than bare numbers. And then we would still be left to, like, analyze and determine what those numbers and determine what those numbers mean. And so if we simply look at what Clerk Bolden has done and assembled, the only thing that I can honestly really conclude is that mayoral salaries are really all over the place and seem to have very little to do with population, and council salaries, well, and clerk salaries are also kind of all over the place, and council salaries are just ridiculously low statewide, ridiculously low statewide. And I'm gonna cite Richmond, Indiana, because I lived in Richmond, Indiana for 15 years, and they get less than $7,000 a year for serving, and I'm not completely sure all of their responsibilities, but that is ridiculously low, ridiculously low. So I am just not sure how useful any kind of basic study would be when all they're really providing is that publicly available information, or how many meetings even, because I think that maybe we just have a really endemic problem where we're not compensating locally-elected officials in this state very well. And I also want to highlight Sidney's mention about cost of living in Bloomington, and Matt mentioned it as well in terms of that economic privilege, you know, when this job comes with the salary that it comes with, you have to do something else in order to survive, which means that you end up being limited in how many hours you can really spend, which means, you know, it just, it's, it's an element of justice, it means that you don't necessarily get the best people up here, you get the people who can manage to afford it. And that's, like, not to denigrate anybody who's up here, right? Like, I'm one of these people up here too, but it just, like, it really limits your pool of people who are able to attempt to be in this position. And I think that that is problematic if we really want our elected officials locally, our locally-elected officials to be really productive and good at this position. So I think that that's my conclusion right now.
Okay, thank you. Just gonna, I asked Andy, he's okay for it right now? Isak, do you have any, do you want to make any, you don't have to, just asking. Okay.
I mean, first, the question on the table, I don't think it's necessarily worth, with the report, with the proposed report that's been delivered to us, I don't know if that's necessarily worth it, because I think that as stated, I think you can do that, collect that data and do that surface level analysis ourselves, and at the end of the day, we'll still be subject to our own reasoning and decision-making here. So I wouldn't generally think that we need to do that as proposed. I think that if we are going to peg salaries to something, I do really like the idea of pegging them to, as a proportion of the mayor's salary or of a department director's salary or something like that. I think that sort of approach makes sense, and then I think also considerations of cost of living makes sense. But I will say generally, I don't think the conversations around how much time we spend are appropriate. I think that we have to be very clear that that's time that we choose to spend. And, I mean, I think the salaries suggest that we should be focusing our time on being more efficient. But then the other thing that I don't think we've discussed, and I think we also need to peg as much as, as much as cost of living is an important consideration, I think the other side of that consideration is what salaries are for the people that we represent. And realistically, a large proportion of our population is poor, and so I think that it's a little interesting for us to sit here and say that, you know, we need more money, and no point during the budget discussions have we talked about poverty alleviation outside of speaking about very intense elements of that, like with homelessness, street homelessness particularly. So I'm not particularly in favor of us, like, I think we're paid appropriately for what we're supposed to be doing, and I think that any consideration of us overworking is all completely in our hands, and that we should be more focused on maybe working less and being more productive with the time that we use.
Okay, so I'll say a few things, let me see. I think it, it sounds like right now, you know, most folks are leaning the Crow study is not exactly, it seems like it's not going to get at what we would want to make this decision, and then so leaning away from that. So that's Isabel's first question. I'm just seeing if I had anything else to do. I think too, I mean, when we talk about, just that, like, we historically see, you know, certain, I guess, categories of folks who are able to serve at this, I would say, salary level that we do, we didn't really talk about who we're leaving out, right? But I think like a single parent couldn't do this. I think we don't tend to have renters, right? We don't tend to have like a single, like, working professional. It's like most people tend to be, I'm just saying, like partnered and like have support at home, and I do think, I do, like, I'm very interested in getting this to a position that is, a salary that is more accessible to people so that either they could see like the financial, the salary as being able to like cover potential like expenses that they would have by being in office and having a full-time job, whether that is, you know, just like having meals prepared, or someone to walk their dog, like, things like that. I just think it could open the door to more folks who really cannot take this role on because it can't add like the expenses and the time. So I'm excited to think about that, to make it more accessible for folks. I, Isabel did ask three questions, so we, the first one, but it was potentially the easiest, Crow study, yes or no? And then if no, what are our other options? So she floated some ideas, right? Like make, do you want to speak, or do you want me to keep going?
Oh, I was gonna ask if Clerk Bolden or Mayor Thompson
Okay.
or Deputy Mayor Knapp wanted to say anything.
And I would just like to add, don't feel pressure, it's okay. It's not showing a lack of support if you do not want to speak, you know, it's just, it's anything. Clerk Bolden?
I was just going to add for the sake of some of the council members who expressed concern about, part of the reason that I collected the information the way that I did was in response to a couple of council members asking what other council members got paid around the state. And that question was asked, I think it was first asked back in February or March, and at the time I was like, yeah, yeah, I'll get to it at some point. So, and originally I went to the AIM salary study, and as we went on, I got the source material, so a lot of what's linked into that spreadsheet are the authorizing documents for those salaries. So as we have our own salary ordinances, other cities do theirs, and I think I shared with a couple of council members, I started to geek out over it because different cities do very different things with their salary ordinances, which is really interesting, and seeing how other cities handle the responsibilities of the council and the clerk is interesting to me both as a resident of our community and as a clerk. So that is why you see all of those blue links in there, because they're the ordinances, the AIM salary study is linked in there anyway, if you just want to see it in one big sheet, it's not always accurate because those are self-reported numbers, and sometimes people, it looks like just transposed numbers or made small errors, which is why going back to the original ordinances was preferable. The decision about setting elected official salaries is, that is yours, I'm trying very hard not to say anything about it, but the information is there. I mean, if you want to pay $13,000 for that study or that information, I'll totally take a check.
Right, okay, okay.
But yeah, that's all I wanted to clarify, it's just that the numbers are linked up to the original documents for you all.
Thank you. Any, anyone in the audience? Okay, okay. Mayor?
Hello, Carrie Thompson, Mayor. I am, you know, when we approach all salaries in any organization, I think it's really important to do our best to be objective. And so it is the council's job to approve salaries for all electeds. In other organizations that have boards that approve a certain tier of salaries, usually those recommendations come from, and best practices, that they come from an HR professional of some sort or from a study of some sort. And so, you know, we have, we've worked really hard on the, on implementation of the Crow study for the non-union. We also had a pretty objective and collaborative approach then with the union negotiation that we went through. I would suggest to council that this is a moment that you may want to figure out what your principle is for setting these elected salaries, and set those guidelines, and then have somebody look at the numbers, whether you pay Crow or you, you know, engage somebody else who is in HR, in HR in some way. I would suggest that this is an opportunity to set some principles about how this is going to be done. It is awkward, as a few council members have mentioned, to set your own salary. And it is the case that you will be voting on your own salaries, but I would suggest that getting a recommendation from somebody who is not elected and therefore not in the study, and somebody to look at those numbers who is not, whose salary is not going to be impacted by the decision, would be a best practice. And, you know, there were, there were several criteria that were provided for the Crow study for the non-union. We might look to those to begin to have some ideas about how to set some principles on, by which you'll make these decisions. But this is a moment that you could really separate the principles from the personalities and just set a methodology and go by it every year.
Okay, I would also, Hopi, do you want to?
I have some things to say to respond to what other people said, but if you could just be honest with us.
Okay. I was just going to say, I mean, I think we're just kind of doing kind of whatever up here, but I do like the idea, I think Isak mentioned it and Matt mentioned it, like the percentage of the mayor's salary, I have probably for decades said, like, I think capitalism would be better if all employees were paid a percentage of the executives, like in the private sector. You can't make more than four times what your lowest employee makes, or something like that. So, I mean, that's just one of my thoughts too, like, I'm just saying I like that idea as well. Obviously, we're all public sector, so we don't have a problem with the CEO making millions of dollars, but I like that, I like that goal. Okay. Hopi?
I, I didn't have my pen out to write the notes about all of the things that I wanted to respond to, because clearly I'm a little disorganized tonight, coming off of that cross-country meet. But one thing that I wanted to mention that when I first read the Crow proposal, that just immediately got my like, I'm not sure that they're the best person for this, because I'm not sure they really understand elected positions as opposed to like normal, like, private sector kind of positions. Because the first thing they said was, well, we'll check on job descriptions for elected officials, and I'm not sure that I've ever seen a job description for any elected official ever, and that it's just, I mean, there's code that says basic, you know, what is in code, but that is not a job description. And so that kind of immediately set me off and go, they, like, I appreciate what Mary Thompson said about that idea of like kind of, you know, checking this over with somebody who's not in the elected sphere, but at the same time, I'm like, are they really the people who understands? Like, is this the, is this who we should use for this? Is that really, like, do they really get it in the same way that I think that they probably really did do a great job with our civil city? So that was one thing that I just wanted to mention in terms of using Crow specifically for this, is to just question whether it's the right choice.
Is, is that, okay, that's what you've got for now? Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Hi, so all of the things that you're saying are things that every single department and every single position in the city also said about Crow. They're not engineers, how can they know what engineers should make? They're not this, how should they know what they make? Yes, I have the same title as someone else who's an office manager, but in my role, I do a lot more than that person, I do more than other people in other cities. So I'm just putting that out there, that that's why the external perspective is important, because internally, we know more about what we do, and so we value it very highly, just like all the people we work with, we're like, so-and-so is awesome, I want so-and-so to be paid fully what they're worth. So-and-so over there, they're awesome, but I don't really know what they do. So that's part of why an external validator, whatever principle you choose to go by, and it is up to you, I think it would be important for the public to have someone at least look at the other materials, look at the, look at the decisions, you know, give you an outside perspective. That could be Crow, it could be someone else, there are lots of other consultants out there, just putting that out there, that the way you're talking about your own jobs is the way every single person in the city also talks about their job. That's, that's one of the hazards of, we know our own jobs, and we don't think others understand them as well as we do.
Yeah, sure. So as a quick question to follow up on that, Gretchen, if you would, so when Crow did their study, did they actually interview our employees?
Our, did they interview our employees? Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, I think, the major difference, is that in the proposal that they have about elected salaries, they're not talking to electeds, they're just compiling a spreadsheet.
They talk to our employees, but if you're asking, did they go around the state and interview engineers and pavers and sanitation people, or all of the things that are done within the city, did they interview people who do every single job in other cities? No.
Well, but that's, but in what they're proposing for electeds, it doesn't say that they would interview any of us. It just says that they would do a comparison with the numbers from other cities.
But you would have representation on the committee that is working with Crow to suggest that. So you can decide what you like, and, you know, I did text with Director Paycheck a little bit and said, you know, hey, what about these other conditions? And Crow is willing to do more, it just takes longer and it costs more. So maybe they're not the right choice for this. I'm not arguing for hiring them, I'm just arguing for thinking about involving something, someone in the process who's not internal to the process. If we were to go to every department within the city and say, what do you think you should make based on the market, based on what other people do compared to what you do, we would be at a very different number than we are today. And they're really hard conversations, there's just no way around it, right? And I agree with, and I think all of us would agree with the general principle of this should be a position that is accessible to people, working people within the city. It should be not a position that you have to be in, a position of privilege to have, it is also a part-time position.
So I would just say, those are, those are all good points, and I appreciate what the mayor said as well, but these are not market positions, there is no market to compare this to. Like I said, nobody is going around saying, okay, now I've got this degree in how to be a council member now, let's see, do I want to go to East Chicago? Do I want to go to Richmond? Do I, oh, I'm gonna go to Hammond because they pay the most. That's not how people decide this, right? So it is substantially different from an engineer.
Andy?
I know this is not a novel idea or concept or comment, but... I know this is not a novel idea, or concept, or comment, but I do want to say it, because this is going to come to us, and I'm going to have to vote, vote on it. But all elected officials knew what their salaries were when they ran, and I'm not going to be supportive, I don't believe I will be, I mean, I guess I could be persuaded, but my instinct is how it's always been, this has come up before in the past, and we've talked about raising our salaries during our term. I'm not going to be favorable, probably, to any significant increase in any elected salary until, except to take effect the year after the term that we're currently serving would end. So, starting the next term. I'm all for boosting salaries for elected officials that work hard and that deserve it, and that make it more accessible option for a wider variety of, in people with a wider variety of incomes. But, you know, we all ran knowing exactly what the salaries were for the work, and for our term. So, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. You have one? Does any, Awola, Matt go? As you, okay, and then you?
Just, yeah, a few more thoughts. I, I will note, this came up last year, and there was talk about tackling this at the time of term transition, for some of the reasons Councilmember Ruff just described, and it really, the folks, folks had the same, or, using different rationale, there was basically the same conclusion, well, we're not going to be there, so like, we don't want to decide things for the next council, which is exact, I guess, the exact opposite, but concluding that they, they too should not act on, on, you know, looking at the question of salaries. Hundred percent agree with most of what I heard from the mayor and the deputy mayor about, and had already, you know, spoken to about setting principles. I think establishing the methodology and what we're trying to accomplish is key. I think we probably need a committee to work on this with an HR professional of some kind. I think that'd be helpful. I think what we were mainly saying is, like, what CROW proposed, ain't it? You know, like, it just clearly missed the mark, and didn't understand a lot about the considerations at hand. It's not to say that they couldn't pivot and, and adjust, but I, but I'm leaning more towards trying to establish a process, and some basic principles, and then maybe having an RFP and hiring somebody. Also, didn't speak too much to the clerk's salary, though this has been a topic of conversation in the last couple of years. And one thing I've, I've repeatedly said is that, you know, the clerk operates and runs a department. The approach historically in the city has been to compensate virtually all department heads in a very close band, that may change over time, but it's always been a relevant point of comparison for me. I think the percent of a mayor's salary is another interesting metric. I, I don't have, I haven't yet to hear, like, a hundred percent thing I agree with, of this is exactly how we should set the clerk's salary. But I did want to note that there's, when we analyze data and look at it, like, quote-unquote objectively, we also, and I think this is already mentioned, need to be aware of, like, systematic bias, and I think that position in particular is probably systematically underpaid, like, through, like, on average and across the state, and like, I just, I guess, that's, wanted to raise that, because I think it's an important consideration when we are talking about setting principles or values in the front end, and being careful with what, like, an objective look at the data tells us, that the data itself can have flaws that are producing flawed outcomes currently, so.
So, Andy brought up an interesting point that I wanted to follow up on, because what, what he said, I think, if I heard him accurately, was that he wouldn't approve a significant increase for any elected salary. And I want to key on that word, significant, right now, because there's been a history, so like, when I started looking into, like, I got curious, and I'm like a math person, right, and I like numbers, and I like statistics, and I think it's fun. I, I'm totally geeking out over the spreadsheet that Clerk Bolden made. And I kind of made my own spreadsheet of elected officials over time, over several years, and looking at that concept of the cost of living increase every year, and that idea of going, okay, like, like, when we, and I mentioned this at some point during budget hearings, and I'm not sure, it was, you know, those were long nights, so I'm not sure how much this was heard, but there's just a built-in inequity when you give everybody across the board a 3% raise, because the people who are at the top of the pay scale get a much larger raise than the people at the bottom of the pay scale. And that continues to extend the, the difference between the top of the pay scale and the bottom of the pay scale. And that, that is not something that I said at the time, like, we can't really change that this year in terms of civil city, but I, I want to look at alternate models for that. And there are some alternate models for that, including giving maybe a partial percentage and a partial flat raise. The county, Monroe County, has done some different things with raises. But it's one of those things, I mean, Andy said significant, and if the mayor's position simply gets the 3% cost of living raise that the rest of the city is kind of automatically getting, that's an increase of more than $4,000. And if we do the same thing with council, I don't have the clerk in here, but if we do the same thing with council, it's a little over $600. So, is $4,000 significant? Like, in terms, like, I'm not asking Andy to answer that right now, but it's that idea of, I mean, that's like a judgment call, like, what does significant mean? Is that cost of living increase significant? Because over time, say, the last eight years, I would say that that has added up to be really, really significant in terms of the gap between the mayor's salary and the salary of council members. Clerk caught up a little bit, because clerk's salary got a pretty big bump last year. But that was also, you know, that difference was really, really extending, and I just want to cite that as something that I've noticed, and, and that I think is, I think it's just something that we have to think about when we think about cost of living increases.
Thank you. It is 8:57, so I just, I don't know how long we want to walk through this. Do we want to talk about action items, and now maybe pivot to, do we create a committee? It sounds like some options, it sounds like people would at least like to, like, adjust the CROW study parameters, if not, look for a different consultant, but I think, I think a committee might be useful to start this process, because we don't have that long, right? We've got three months to get it all done?
Yes, so I wanted to make you aware that the deadline for this is technically the end of the year, but right now you only have, I believe, nine meetings left. There's a limited number of meetings to actually get this done. I think the last one is December 11th. That doesn't mean you couldn't add more, but of course, I know that folks have probably, it's, it'll be December. But it's an ordinance, so it'll need two readings, so you'll need to have it set for, for two of the remaining nine meetings left.
Okay, thank you. So, that's a good point. We only really, I mean, December 11th is, would be our last day to approve anything. Does it, do you all want to talk about a committee, and who might want to be on it? I mean, is that, do you think a good next step, Isabel, or what do you, I mean, I think the idea that the mayor put out there of principles and goals, and like, potentially some kind of rubric, I guess I'm just using that word, but makes sense, and then maybe from there, look at adjusting the CROW deliverables, or look at, look to see if there's, like, some kind of elected consultant for salaries, or, do, do you all just think, I don't know, maybe four of us, or, would make sense, or three? I'm not sure. Or something totally different?
No, I think that's a good idea. And if, if we don't, I, I think it, it's an excellent idea to develop some principles, and to be very thoughtful about this, because ideally, we would set up a system that we would then apply every year. And if we don't get it done this year, we could still get it done next year. So, I, I don't think we should rush it just to get something done by the deadline. But yes, an ad hoc committee of three or four would be great.
That makes a lot of sense, and also, I don't know if we can even create a committee before our next regular session. I don't, how does that, can we, or, parliamentarian?
I think we need a regular session for that.
Session to do that, okay.
Is that correct? I think it is, because technically, we're in committee of the whole right now. If we were in a special session, I think it'd be okay. But because we're in committee of the whole right now, so, I mean, I don't think that we can...
Speaking as someone who just loves meetings, and it's kind of sad, we're not scheduling all those hiring committee meetings anymore, I would love to be on this new committee. And I don't have to be, if enough people are really excited.
Yeah, I would also recommend a four-person committee, instead of a three-person committee, having come off a hiring committee that started with three people, which meant that I couldn't actually talk to one of the other people, like, ever, and, because then the two people would be a quorum, so that was just really challenging. So, I would recommend four people, and I would be happy to be on it as well, but I also don't have to be.
Okay. And we don't, it doesn't have to be like, we don't have to self-select, of course, we can just put in our resumes. Matt, is joke?
Just, yeah, just a quick note, I was, I was trying to find the relevant bit of code quickly, but my recollection is that any three or more members of council can form an ad hoc committee, like...
Like, tonight?
At any time. I don't think it has...
Anytime, at the bar.
Again, I'm trying to find the section, well, well, yes, but then, once you were a committee, you were subject to open-door law, you know, well, always open-door law, but, um, public access, or sorry, public, what's the, open-door law, yes, meeting notice, all the rest. I'm trying to find the section of code to verify that, but that's my recollection, I don't know if interim deputy attorney Hulek knows that offhand.
I'm pulling up the, the, well, it's really tiny, but yes. Any three council members or the presiding officer may form a special committee for any specific purpose proper for council consideration. So, that would be a special committee which would cease to function when it has completed its duties and made a report or recommendation to the council. I can try to zoom in on this.
So, any three council members or the president can form such a committee, but when? Like, does it have to be at a regular session?
I can't read the committee of the whole.
I can't read that.
What does the committee of the whole say in terms of what we're allowed to do?
It's, it's not, I feel, I don't think it's in order in this meeting, but I'm, my recollection assumption was that it does not have to be accomplished in a regular session, or, or other meeting. It'd be worth verifying that.
Okay, I think at least we're all kind of on the page that we're not going to make it tonight, we're just going to talk about it. I think that's okay. Is there anyone tonight that wants to just say they're interested in it? So far, we have Hopi, Kate, Sidney. Did you, was that a?
We can't see Dave anymore. Is Dave still here?
He left. Okay, all right.
No, he left and has not rejoined.
Okay, so if we do form a four-person committee, we're going to have to get somebody through peer pressure, which is okay.
Which doesn't have to happen tonight.
Oh, yeah, Matt, he volunteers for everything.
I'm fairly astounded, I'm happy to serve on a committee, too.
He says yes to everything, if there's silence. Okay, so, how do you feel about wrapping up for tonight? I mean, do we, oh, Nicole, do you have something?
I'm trying this. I was just trying to catch up, and I didn't catch all the names that indicated interest.
Oh, and interest would be Hopi, Kate, Sidney, and Matt, neutral to interested.
Thank you.
I don't know. Just trying to get it right for the brief non-minutes. Okay, do we, do we want to keep, Matt?
I, I have maybe a logistical question or two with respect to CROW in particular, and, and the conversations that have progressed to date. I don't know if Mayor Thompson is able to, or, Isabel, if you knew more information about that. Like, I, I think if we wanted, given the, the timelines at play, if we were trying to assess the possibility of, you know, reaching some conclusions this year, obviously, turning it around quickly is helpful, so the existing relationship with CROW is helpful, and I think there was maybe some advantage to sort of extending or adding on to our past contract. Is that all right? And I guess, it seems like we might want to have the committee have a conversation with the staff from CROW, to talk through some of these concerns and questions, to assess, like, if, if we think there's alignment on being able to accomplish what we'd like to see.
Yes, I think they're open to a conversation. Is that the direct question? They can tweak, they can tweak the proposal, I imagine, many different ways, they just were responding to our original, could you do something? So, now that we have perhaps some more firm guidelines, I would say, getting it from them, or somebody else, is a, is an option, yeah.
Great, okay, thank you.
Does it sound neat to maybe have one of us who was interested in the committee talk with the mayor, get a contact for CROW? Like, would it make sense for one of us to kind of talk with CROW about just starting that process, and maybe tweak the deliverables?
Maybe talk with Director Paycheck about that. She's, she's the primary contact with CROW, so been working very intensively with her on implementing the, the salary survey.
Join us this evening, but I guess she, she was unable to, so...
She's been very ill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry to hear that.
Okay, so that sounds, I think, like a good, something one of us could do in the meantime, before our next regular session in October, October 1, right?
Which is literally next week.
I don't know what day it is. Okay, so, no, that sounds good.
October is next.
I thought it was two weeks from now. I just can't get it through my head. Okay, great, so, that sounds good, and then we, at the next session, we can make our committee, and talk to CROW, and potentially, I do think there is value in, like, tweaking the CROW study deliverables, because they have been working with us for so long already, and they do know Bloomington and the city pretty well, and so there, I think there is a lot of value there, and it does feel like, because they know us, they, we're like, we can work with you on a timeline, too, which is nice. Anyone? Isabel, do you?
Oh, I just wanted to remind everybody that our regular session next week is on Tuesday.
Tuesday, October 1st.
And the executive session this Friday at noon.
Andy?
Just before we leave this discussion, I've heard some of my colleagues express what I thought was that CROW's proposed approach in response to the four new factors proposed by council was just not even close. But then I've heard other council members in the last few minutes talk about tweak, using, about tweaking. Now, tweaking, to me, indicates something that actually is kind of close, just needs tweaking. So, just to be on record, I, I don't think they're that far off. I think tweaking is what's needed, not anything, you know, not starting from scratch and being dramatic. I think it's close, and I just want to be clear, that's where I'm at on it.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. I think that's good. Okay, anyone? It's your time to shine, if anyone has anything else? No, okay, thank you so much. That concludes our committee of the whole.
I did it, I did it.